Good evening. Thanks for coming tonight. We're gonna call the Planning Commission Meeting, September 2022, to order. Would you like to do roll call?
Vice Chair Tarnay?
Oh, here.
Commissioner Freeman?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Chair Gove is noted as absent.
Item three is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to skip that for tonight. Can we skip it? Or would you like to lead it? Okay, I think we're gonna skip it.
Sounds good to me.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. So item number four on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Commission on items which are not on this agenda. If you do get up to make a comment, please state your name for the record. They are, comments are limited to three minutes. The Commission cannot take action on an item that is not on the agenda. The Commission may choose to acknowledge a comment, or where appropriate briefly answer a question, and refer the matter to staff, or even set the item for discussion for a future meeting. Would anyone like to make a public comment? And there's a podium up there. All right. Then I will close public comment. Item five is approval of minutes, which we have none today. Item six is public hearings minor review, which we also have none. Item seven is public hearings major review. So item 7.1 is, do I have to say that application number? Very long. Application 20210000097, DPPD, AFDUPZC, Soaring Ranch Phase III. So the applicant has requested to postpone this item to one of the next following meetings. And so then we'll just open public comment on this, and that's all we need to do? If anyone would like to make public comment on the Soaring Ranch Phase III item? All right. Then I will close public comment on 7.1. Then we'll move on to item 7.2, which is the Ferwurda Urban Lot Split Appeal. And then I believe, are we, is the staff presenting something first? Yes.
Yes.
Lucas, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Phew, pulled that up. Take it away, thank you.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lucas Cannell, and I'm an Assistant Planner with the town. I'm here to present the Ferwurda Urban Lot Split Appeal tonight for your review. This appeal has been continued from July 19th Planning Commission Meeting. Tonight's appeal hearing format will be a staff presentation, followed by the appellant's presentation, for which will be allotted 15 minutes, commission questions for staff and the appellant, public comment, and then the appellant rebuttal, for which he'll be allotted five minutes. The appellant may not present new evidence or testimony at this appeal hearing unless the appellant can demonstrate the new information was not previously available to the party, or the party could not have participated in the review process because they could not have known about the review process. Tonight, the Planning Commission is hearing a request to remove three conditions of approval that were required for the recordation of a Senate Bill 9 Urban Lot Split. The project was originally approved on February 23rd, 2022, with conditions that were required to be satisfied prior to recording the lot split. The Planning Commission's role tonight will be to determine if staff has correctly interpreted the town's development code, correctly applied the development code, and in general whether the community development director's determination was consistent with the development code. The project parcel is located at 14379 East Reed Avenue on the north side of Donner Lake in the Lakeview subdivision. In 2016, a permit for the new residents was approved at 14379 East Reed Avenue. An earlier version of the permit had removed a proposed encroachment on Donner Avenue on the south side of the parcel, but the final approved plan set had this encroachment added back in. Due to it being on the approved plan set, a 24-by-10 parking pad was allowed to be constructed and was given legal non-conforming status. At some point between 2016 and the SB 9 Urban Lot Split application being submitted, this parking pad was extended to 50 feet long without the town's approval. The first of the three conditions being appealed is to bring the parking pad back into conformance with the approved plan set. The appellant maintains that this is a separate issue and should not be tied to the proposed urban lot split. The approved parking pad was considered legal non-conforming. Although this secondary encroachment was permitted, lots under two acres in size are only allowed one encroachment. Additionally, the pad has now been expanded to 50 feet, and the public improvements in engineering standards requires that encroachments not exceed 24 feet. Staff is requesting that it be restored to its original approved state, allowed by Senate Bill 9 and the town's development code. The second condition being appealed was a request from the Truckee-Donner Public Utility District to survey the property, and if the utility lines along Donner Avenue were found to be on the property as opposed to in the public right-of-way, a public utility easement was to be recorded over them so that they will be protected in perpetuity. The appellant states that the electrical facility easement is not a town issue, and the utility district aired when they placed the poles on his property. Truckee's development code allows the town to request easements for the provision of public services and facilities. Although the town is allowed to request an easement at the behest of a local utility provider, this item has been resolved and is no longer required for the recordation of the SB 9 Lot Split. The third condition being appealed is the requirement that a legal description be submitted for each parcel, as well as a final map created by a licensed land surveyor or qualified engineer. These documents would be used to create the new parcel. The appellant has discussed requesting a waiver for the final map, but this could not be permitted by the development code. Waivers need to be approved by the zoning administrator, and this project was approved ministerially at the staff level. The appellant states that this is redundant to require both items, and the original parcel was surveyed as part of the Lakeview subdivision. Although the appellant supplied the town with a tentative map as part of his application, it does not meet the requirements to be reported and subdivide his property. A final map is a mechanism that will be used to legally subdivide the existing parcel. Legal descriptions and recorded maps are important documents for future homeowners, as well as agencies or departments that are trying to determine property lines or easements. Both the development code and SB 9 legislation require the recordation of a final map to have this information on record for future decision-making. Staff recommends that the Commission uphold the original approval, along with all conditions of approval, and deny the appeal. Staff believes that all conditions were appropriately applied when the project was approved, and believes that they should be required prior to the recordation of the Senate Bill Urban Lot Split. All conditions of approval are based on either SB 9 legislation or the town's existing subdivision Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then I believe the appellant is presenting something as well?
That is correct.
And that's, he has 15 minutes?
Exactly.
Hello, my name is Robert Ferwurda.
I don't know if that-
I gotta push the button? Hello, my name is Robert Ferwurda. I'm the applicant, I'm the owner of the property. Thank you for your time, appreciate your participation for the good of the community and having some time for my problem or my issue. What my ultimate intent is, is divide my property and create two ADU-type units, an ADU and a junior ADU, so that I can provide kind of rental income to me, but also some affordable housing to the community. I believe the, these conditions are unreasonable, and it's kind of an overreaching on the part of the town or the planning staff. The issues that will be put forth tonight are more legal issues than really planning issues, but when I objected to the, those conditions, I was told this is my only route. So I apologize, because I think there's some legal concerns. As an executive summary, I'm gonna be real quick and say, I have a parking pad. It's been called a lot of other things, it's been characterized, but it's basically a street parking, parallel to the traveled way. And I believe that it is legal. The town has kind of twisted the improvement standards, or development standards, and called it a driveway. Well, it's not a driveway, because it's only 10 feet deep. And there is no road encroachments. What's kind of unique in this subdivision, this is the Lakeview subdivision, which is halfway between the two ends of Donner Lake and halfway between the lake and the freeway. It's a steep hillside, and it's a very old subdivision, but what I'm getting to is the pavement wanders within the right-of-way, and where my property is located, the pavement or the roadway is right next to the, my property. So this is a parking pad on my property. Now, the other, the second issue is this PUD requirement. And I feel like I've been caught in a trap, that it's got, the PUD's location of wires, and there's no pole on my property, there's only one overhead wire. It's a right-of-way, it's an easement or right-of-way issue totally unrelated to my lot split. And I've wound up spending a lot of time trying to resolve this issue, when it really, it's not enabled by the SB 9 provisions of the municipal code. I guess I just want to say, I want to build and get ahead. Now, I want to talk briefly about the Lakeview subdivision. It's a unique subdivision. It's 100 years old. It has small lots, there's nine lots per acre. It's got narrow street right-of-way, only 25 feet, and within that right-of-way, there's only one lane road, it's only paved 12 feet wide. It's a very friendly kind of community, we kind of know each other. There's a lot of, what I want to call it, funny situations, the encroachments into the road right-of-way, into the easements, and that's kind of the character of our neighborhood. Now, it's my opinion, that my problem is because the zoning code did not consider the uniqueness of this community compared with what I'd call a standard subdivision, a 10,000-square-foot lot, you know, with 50-foot-wide streets and everything. All I want to do is be able to park on the side of the street, and I'm parking on my own property. And I think that's a very reasonable use. Now, I've provided a handout, and it's, and the exhibits are numbered, and for exhibit item number five, which is a map of the subdivision, and what's really significant is all the red stripes are people who have parking pads that are more than 24 feet wide. It's commonplace, I think there's 62 of them. The other issue is the green lines, and that's where people have frontages on both streets. Now, on a through lot, I have frontage to the, by the front of my house, but I also have street frontage on the back of my house. And what's neat about that is I can create this ADU, or this separate living unit, and they don't have to traverse through my part of the property kind of thing. So it's an area where these lot splits, I think, are very desirable. Now, it does, you know, raise the density, but that's part of the objective of SB 9, is to allow more housing, more living units on, on single-family lots. So my point is, having the dual, having a parking pad or a driveway wider than 24 feet is very typical and normal. And I have to point out that the topography in this area is very steep. The grade is like 50% on the average, up to 50%. Well, that's why most of the people park parallel to the street. In fact, what's funny is, they park parallel to the street all over town. When the town at Truckee does improvements on Donner Pass Road, they put parking parallel to the traveled way, and that's all I'm doing, is, is having parking available. Now, one of the things that I really want to point out, oh, I should point out that item one is a picture of, of the permit that was submitted, and it shows the house by East Reed Avenue, and I've highlighted the, the area where this, I had a grading permit where I notched into the hillside for the parking pad, and I've also highlighted the, the coverage. Now, we need to look at item two. And item two is, is very powerful, because these are the exemptions to a building permit. And I've highlighted 105.2, work exempt from a permit. And it goes on further, say permit shall not be required for sidewalk driveways not more than 30 feet. So this whole issue started at this unpermitted coverage or pavement. Well, the answer is, it doesn't need to be permitted. What it needs to do is not have coverage, impervious coverage, in excess of 50% of the lot area. And that's, if you look at item number three, that's where that criteria is. And when you look at my site plan, there's a calculation up on top of coverage, and I have less, I have, originally I had 40% of coverage, and that's why I think I had every right to have additional coverage, because I was under the 50%. So that, I'm governed by the 50%, but I'm not governed by the need for approval or for a permit, because of what permits are not required. I would go on to further say, is I had discussion with the previous building official, Johnny Getz, I've had discussion with Mike Ross about coverage, and they, it's unpermitted. They both stated to me, but here's the fact that it's not required. So I found myself in a trick, where it started out being unpermitted coverage, but I don't need a permit for it. And then they've kind of slid around, and now they're using the word approval, but there's no requirement to have such approval. I did make changes during the construction, but those are the normal things you tend to do. Now, also- Is I got permits, and if we look at item number six, that's the grading permit, and the grading permit allowed me to move, do the excavation. The fact that the pavement was shown there is incidental, it's not like approval or unapproval kind of thing, but not only did I obtain a grading permit, it was final. And what's attached to the grading permit, item six, is the, excuse me, is the driveway was final kind of thing. So I have a driveway by the house, or the front of the house, but I need additional parking, and that's why I created this, this building pad. And there's also a building permit for the building, and that permit was, was final. Then there's a whole list of all the inspections you go through, and, you know, you can't file a permit until you satisfy all the requirements. So the, the town is kind of trying to pull double jeopardy on me, as I went through the process with, with good faith, and all of a sudden I understand, well, he got away with this, and he got away with that. Well, I, I don't see it that way. I would point out, there's two photos provided, numbers nine and 10, and the thing about that is, it shows if you put, if it's a second driveway, because that's, they want to beat me up because of the driveway requirements. If I park a vehicle in a driveway, you'll see that it's halfway out in the street, and that's what number nine shows. And in number 10, if you park in the driveway, and the guy across the way is in the way, you can't even drive down the street. So it's not a driveway. And there's a lot of attempt to apply those criteria. The driveway criteria works fine in a 10,000-square-foot lot kind of thing. It doesn't work, or it's not, it should not be applied in this situation. So, anyway. You know, my point is, I have one driveway, and then I have additional parking along Donner Avenue. I talked briefly about the PUD issue, is I don't think there's anything in Section 18.95 that gives the, the town any jurisdiction as far as that easement is concerned. What's that?
Your microphone keeps cutting out or something, I'm not sure.
The red light's on.
Okay, maybe just step a little closer to it, but-
Okay.
You're doing great, I can hear you great.
Okay. Now, the last item is the parcel map, and I think item number, let's see. Item number 12 allows for a waiver, and it's a very reasonable thing to do. You can do a certificate of compliance. Now, this issue, I'm an engineer, so I can, I can do the parcel map, that's not a big deal. I feel that it's a mistake by the planning department to require it, because there's considerable expense to the applicant. And I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about all the future applicants are required to do a parcel map, and it's unnecessary, and it's expensive. If you want to keep the cost of these ADUs down, they, the town adopted reduced building fees, well, this is a requirement that's redundant, just do a certificate of compliance, a deed description, and there's, they're done all the time, I've done them in the past, there's no reason for this, other than an unreasonable demand. But my point is, the town allows you, in this circumstance, to get a waiver of a parcel map, and I think that's what should be done. Not only for me, but all future SB 9 applicants. So with that said, I'm ready to answer questions, or I probably have used up my 15 minutes.
I don't know, I didn't keep track, did you guys? Ooh, three minutes left, if you would like to.
No, I've said it all, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So then, what would happen now is commission questions for staff, correct?
And for the appellant.
Usually we do staff first and then appellant, or?
That would be fine.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Freeman?
I have no questions for staff.
I have some questions, and this could be staff, this could be applicant, let's start with staff. I'm having a really hard time understanding what I'm looking at. I kind of get the general sense of what we're talking about, but then I look at the, I look at the topography and the location, and I can't wrap my head around how another house would be built on this property. Maybe someone from staff could help me understand how that would work. Because I, I mean, I come from an architecture or planning background, and having this, he said it's a 50% grade, I didn't even know that's allowed, that we could do a house in that type of a slope. So maybe just like the basics to start with.
Sure. So the hillside development standards do not apply to single-family residences, so as long as your engineering allows for it, will allow you to construct on that slope.
So there's, there's no limitations?
The limitations would be the engineering proving that you can meet the geotechnical requirements of the structure.
I thought we had a 30%, like-
You're correct. For non-residential projects, we have a hillside development standard that would come into effect.
Not, wait, Danielle, you just said not, I, I thought like we look at Tahoe-Donner projects, I'm just, I'm confused.
Yeah, we're just referring to, it's not for single-family. If you were doing a larger subdivision or something like that, then we would apply the hillside standards, but not just for a house on a steep lot.
Okay, so it doesn't apply.
We're not contemplating a second house at this point, we're just talking through the, what's being appealed is the approval of the subdivision that would create a second lot.
Okay, so, and that's another question, is should I not be trying to put my hat on of fathoming how a unit would, this is really just about a lot subdivision, and then if the applicant were to come forward with a design or a project, then we would look at that.
Your, your commission would not look at that.
This would be an over-the-counter-
Yes, yeah, SB 9 is, is purposefully ministerial, both the subdivision and any homes that are constructed as a result.
And are you looking, you're looking at, you'd be looking at the feasibility of how these structures could coexist?
Sure, yes. That'll, it'll have to comply with all of the SB 9 standards.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what those are in terms of building code and such, or if there's exemptions.
SB 9 is a, is a unique law that was created about a year and a half ago, and it has different setbacks and different requirements than is normal of Truckee standards.
Yeah, and I'm, I am aware of those, I guess it's more of just kind of, you know, in Truckee, what might be allowed because of our constraints, topographical versus other locations. But if I, so if I'm only supposed to be looking at this from the standpoint of the applicant and the, the interest, or the application to subdivide the lot, I'm not looking at feasibility or things like that. I do have another question. Is it possible that the town, when the town was granting the permit to the applicant for the, or finaling the, the applicant out for the house on the north side of the lot, they didn't look at the south side? That the, that pad was kind of overlooked?
Well, the pad is legal as a 10-by-24 parking pad. It was on the final approved plan set, it's the expansion on it that was not allowed.
And describe the expansion for me.
So it was at, was it 24-
24-by-10, that was what was approved on the south side of the property.
So the, the parking pad is a standard parallel parking spot, 10-by-24 feet, which is allowed by our code, except for the fact that it's a second encroachment, which we don't allow, which made a legal non-conforming improvement on the lot. And so there's two issues. One is that we don't allow encroachments beyond 24 feet, so any expansion on it wouldn't be allowed in that regard. But it's also legal non-conforming, and so by expanding it, you'd be exacerbating the legal non-conformity, which can only be done with approval of the director through a zoning clearance, which was never tried to be obtained.
And that's, the town is trying to rectify that by requiring the applicant to remove that parking pad prior to moving forward with approving the lot split?
Just bringing it back into conformance with what was originally approved.
Which, which was the 24-by-10?
Exactly.
Even though the 24-by-10, I'm confused, because it sounded like that wouldn't be allowed as a second encroachment.
That is true, it was accidentally approved in 2016 when the house was built. It was on the plan set that we stamped and signed, and so we kind of signed off on it at that time. So it got a legal non-conforming status, it was legally built, we signed off on it. It can exist for its useful lifespan, but you're not allowed to expand it.
Okay.
My understanding is that different iterations of the plan set were submitted, and the first version didn't show it at 10-by, didn't show that encroachment, and then a subsequent version did, and we just didn't catch it.
Okay.
And it was the final version that, that got signed off on.
And so in theory, the 24-by-10 pad never should have been approved with the original submittal, because they already had an encroachment on the north side? Is that correct?
That is correct.
You can't have kind of the dual-
Exactly.
-relationship, or?
You're not allowed to have two driveway encroachments on a lot of this size.
And, and, and I know the applicant is making the case, this is a parking pad, not a driveway encroachment. So how is that?
Well, we're more concerned about it as an encroachment. What its purpose is, is kind of immaterial a little bit.
And then what about kind of the, were there any issues with the retention of the hillside, or kind of the, those elements of what was built?
There is supposed to be stormwater drainage and a riprap retaining wall. They're not currently in place. The water retention basins were paved over, and the riprap retaining wall, I don't know if it was ever fully installed, but it's not in place now.
And so is, is the town looking for the, for that to be put in place? Or is it, the, the town wants everything removed, like basically back to how it was prior to the encroachment pad development, before they would allow the lot split approval?
As a condition of approval, the town would like to see the parking pad be put back to what was originally approved, which-
Just the 24-by-10?
With a riprap retaining wall and retention.
Okay, so with improvements to create a supported-
Exactly.
-pad, okay. That's all, thank you.
I have some, some similar questions as well. So, first off, I just want to ask, what is our definition of a roadway encroachment?
That would be anything that is melded to the paved driving surface in the right-of-way. So in this case, this parking pad is connected to Donner Avenue, to the roadway itself. So it would be considered an encroachment, it comes into the right-of-way, and it connects to our roadway.
But it wouldn't include a sidewalk, which is melded to the road?
I don't believe so.
Because it's not on grade?
Sidewalks are also generally in the right-of-way as a public improvement, but if you had a private sidewalk, it wouldn't be considered an encroachment. I think it needs to also be used for vehicles.
Okay. So it, it sounds like to me, another question, is East Reed a town-maintained road, and is, what's the one on the south, Donner something? Are these town-maintained roads, Donner Avenue?
I don't believe so.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't believe either is maintained by the town.
Do we have right to talk, I mean, do we, as a town, then have the right to talk about what's happening in the road if it's not something that's maintained by the town?
We do.
Yeah, our engineering department still issues encroachment permits, whether it's a private road or a public road. So part of that's to ensure safety for everyone who's accessing that roadway, so it doesn't matter if it's public or private. There's still public access.
It's publicly accessed. There you go.
Okay. It's public, publicly accessed but privately maintained? Okay. And both of those are, the one on the north and the one on the south? And why do we only allow one encroachment per parcel less than two acres?
That's a development code standard.
Is there a, is there, I just, I would love to hear a great reason for it.
Well, reductions in encroachment can help you control where traffic flow is coming from. So it's from a, probably a safety perspective of having less places where people are entering the roadway.
It's also for snow storage too, so, and snow removal, so that there's adequate space that isn't occupied by vehicles to be able to do that work.
Which the town does not do in this location.
But again, it doesn't matter because that still has to happen. It's just a private operator doing it.
Right, so having more driveway encroachments reduces the amount of snow storage area that you have accessible, and especially in a subdivision with smaller lots like this one where they're 5,000 square feet. It significantly impacts the ability to stose, stose-norg. Stop talking.
That actually is a very good reason. Thank you. And I sent a bunch of questions when we were originally going to see this, and I might want to sort of pull those up again. And then I, I just want to quick talk about the, Mr. Ferwarda contends that the parking pad was in place when the building and grading permits were finalized. And like, do we know, was it in place as a 10 by 24? Because it sounds like he's saying that it was a 10 by 50 at that point. Do we have any pictures, drawings? Is there any, does that make sense now?
Yeah, none of us were there at the time. It probably was 10 by 24, but we can't prove that.
It was approved at 10 by 24.
It was approved.
It was not approved as 10 by 50.
Okay, and in a 10 by 24, you can still fit two cars, can, can you? Can't you? I would imagine, right?
Probably depending on the vehicle, but...
Not parallel park?
Our typical car space is 10 by 20 that we require in a, in a parking spot.
If you had two VW Bugs, you could fit them in there, but a truck, no? Is that, no? She says no. All right. Let me pull up the other. So what are the minor modifications that are, that are being required that are not present right now? How extensive are they? Is this, I mean, is, is this the, the limiting factor? We have an engineer, I mean, he's worried about the future, but, I mean, is it, is it that much more that needs to be added to this map?
It's, it's not a large amount of modifications, but there are requirements to meet the minimum provisions of the Subdivision Map Act for recordation. Mr. Ferwarda is licensed to create the map, but for instance, this map is very bare bones. We don't have a project, or we don't have a parcel description yet, so we would just need this map to be modified to meet the legal recordation requirements.
Okay, I understand the, the description, and that's where they use the words to actually say where the boundaries of it, and, and that would also include the new boundary between the two, correct?
Yes.
But is there anything, what is specifically missing from the map?
I would have to look at the Subdivision Map Act and the tentative map to tell, but...
It's technical type information from my recollection that's just required when you record a document with the county recorder.
That's a little general, technical type information.
Well, it's, it's stuff that a surveyor needs, so we're not surveyors, right? So there's things that we forward to our town surveyor to do, to look at on behalf of us. So things like, are the meets and bounds accurate? Are the closure calcs for the parcels accurate? There's a lot of things that come with that package of information that we then forward to our surveyor to review that, at that technical level.
Survey data, then? Yeah, perfect. Okay. So that's not on here, on this. So I'm a little, the, the waiver for the, the final map, that is not in this section for the lot splits, correct? That is under a different section in the code?
That is correct.
And so it's not available for the, the SB9 lot split? It's available for, for different types of projects? And once this is made into two properties, then they are allowed two encroachments, correct? It would still have to be a 24?
That is correct. They are allowed two encroachments, but it wouldn't be allowed to exceed 24 feet.
Okay. And then, so, so this is, this one with the red things, that's, that's compelling. Have we looked at that? Are all of these existing non-conforming?
I don't think that we can confirm that, but the subdivision also predates building permits, so there's probably a lot of legal non-conforming infrastructure in this development. I believe it was approved in 1951. Nevada County's Building Department didn't come into effect until 1962.
All right. I think, let me take one more look here. Okay, I think that's all the questions that I have for staff. Does anybody have questions for the applicant?
Not at this point, no.
I have just a couple of questions. So you built the house, correct?
Yes, correct.
And the parking pad, when you built it, was the 14 by 24?
Ten.
Or 10 by 24?
Is the microphone on? Can you hear me? Let me explain that the grading permit was issued to create, this is a hillside. I've notched into the hillside, okay? And the excavation that was approved by the grading permit was a pad basically 10 by 50. And that's what's depicted on the first drawing sheet, item number one. If you look at, on the, on the plan, there's that yellow area. So it was full width. Yeah, that. Do you see the, the yellow curved line at the, on, on Donner Avenue? No, you're looking...
It's not yellow for us.
I understand, yeah.
Oh, I apologize. I was supposed to be highlighting it. But if you look at Donner Avenue, there's a line and there's hatch marks. That's the grading. So creating the, the parking pad was approved. No controversy. What the controversy is, is how much impervious surfacing can be there. The town gets hung up on this driveway requirement, and that's where the 24 feet comes from, okay? But what I'm saying is, it's not a driveway, so you can't apply that standard in this situation, and that's why I showed you the picture of the red trucks sticking out in the street, because that's, you know, driveways are perpendicular to the traveled way. Did that, do I answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I guess I'm just looking at the Google Street View right now, and I can see a storage container on a trailer and a bunch of tools, and it, it looks like fresh grading on the hillside, like it was recently adjusted. I'm just curious, you know, was it built to the original plan, and then it was changed at some point, or was it always this way?
What I did in the past six months or something like that, I did a little more additional excavating. Now, to talk about the riprap issue, is I requested that to be deleted during the time of construction. The reason is, this hillside is all rock. It stands by itself. It doesn't need retainage. Okay? So that's what my application was. It got a little confusing between the town and myself, but that was what the request, and that's why the riprap was not originally put in. This is a rocky hillside. It stands by its own. It doesn't need retention.
Okay. That's fine. No, no further questions. Thanks.
No, thanks.
Okay. As the applicant, I'd like to respond to some of the discussion that went on, is one is, I have a building designed and planned, and we're going to notch into the hillside. It's going to be like a daylight basement, so, and I've even submitted it to the Planning Department, and there's been some review and approvals and some concerns that I'll address. The big thing is, I'm willing to do the excavation, the rock excavation, to get another living unit on my property, and it's, you know, I've got preliminary plans, and I think they're very buildable. The town does not maintain the road. The road is maintained by the homeowners. I take responsibility for Donner Avenue. I collect money from the, the people that front on it, and I pay a snow removal contractor. What the snow removal contractor does, and he doesn't have a problem, this snow storage is a red herring, is he plows the streets and then he plows all the parking pads, because everybody's got a parking pad, or half the people have parking pads, and he just goes ahead and does that. So we have a coordination between the street removal, snow removal, and the private property removal, and it works, you know, very effectively kind of thing. There's really no reason to limit to one driveway, especially on a through lot. I mean, this, this lot, in my opinion, and all the other similar ones, have a right to utilize or access the streets on both sides. That's a unique characteristic of a through lot. Let me think. The representations with regards to the needs of a surveyor are misunderstood. You can subdivide this lot with one sentence, the back 40 feet of Lot 9. You don't, all these, all the information on a parcel map are, are not needed. I speak as a surveyor. I'm licensed to practice survey in California, and I have done many of these certificates of compliance where you, it's just a verbal description. What the Planning Department wants, it wants a verbal description, and then it also wants a map. And I'm saying, and I'm saying this for all future applicants, is you don't need the map. And that's why you have within the, the code, Town Council or Town Code, an SB9 lot split is not different than any other subdivision. So the fact that it's not in the section for SB9 requirements doesn't mean that it can't be applied in that situation. It applies, that provision in the municipal code applies to any subdivision. If it meets, there's a criteria. The lot has to be originally created with a map, and that has been done, and you're only creating two parcels out of one. So it fully complies with that requirement. The other point I want to make is this subdivision dates from 1918. It's 100 years old. It's an urban subdivision, you know, it's kind of like a higher density, and we live with that. So what I think I'm getting caught in, in fact, I want to make this point, it's my opinion there should be a separate provision in the zoning code for this particular subdivision or others like it, because I think there may be parcels or subdivisions in the Old Town area which are similar. Because I know last week, there was a gentleman on High Street that was going through an approval, and, and he had a through lot very similar to mine. So I think through lots or Lakeview subdivisions are unique, and that hasn't been addressed by the, whoever prepared the zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferward. All right. How do you guys feel? We need to move into deliberation.
Public, did you do public comment?
You can do public comment before you choose to deliberate.
Okay. If anybody else would like to make public comment, please join us at the podium. You will have three minutes, opening public comment.
I have one more public comment.
No. Good.
I live in this neighborhood. I'm a full-time resident. I've talked with all my neighbors about what I want to do. They say, hey, that's a great idea. Go ahead with it. And that's why, you know, there's nobody here from my neighborhood, because, and I've told them about it, because I've permitted enough projects that if there is resistance, you want to hear about it and see if you can adjust your project to that. So that's my public comment.
I'll just note that there were two written public comments that were received. Both of those were letters in opposition to the approval of SB9 application.
I guess my request is, can I see those letters? I mean, I'm kind of flying blind.
They are on the, you can access them through the website, correct? So if you go to the Town of Truckee and the calendar and click on today's meeting. Okay. Thank you. I'm going to close public comment, and then we're going to move into deliberation. So I would love to hear how you guys are feeling.
You know, I, I kind of see the pros and cons with this. I love that the applicant wants to do an ADU and a JADU and kind of address our housing needs. I think that's great and the direction we need to go in. What I'm hung up on is, and perhaps to no fault of the applicants to some degree, I do think there may have been some things that got slipped in, maybe that the town didn't see and make note of that have impacted this. But I have a really hard time not supporting what the town is asking this applicant. I don't think it's overreaching. I, I personally think that this lot in particular should be surveyed, especially because there's a desire to put what sounds like a fairly significant amount of development on the remaining part. And I, and I understand the concerns about the, the double encroachments. And it does sound, from reading the public comments, which we're both in opposition to what's being proposed, you know, the, the one that we have in front of us notes, you know, their support of the conditions that the town has implemented, as well as some of the condition, the current conditions that exist on site for this applicant, insufficient off-street parking, parking at the neighbors', storage, drainage, the topography. So I, I, I feel like it sets a bad precedent as we move into really trying to encourage the creation of the ADUs. I don't think it should be a process that is just, you know, without thought and concern for the things that impact this community, whether that's, you know, topography, access, storage, drainage, et cetera. And so I, as much as I, I hear the applicant and I, I agree with many of the, the points he's trying to make, I don't think that what the town is asking is, is overreaching.
Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, just to be clear, we're just approving the appeal. The urban lot split has been approved, just the conditions of approval if those are required, correct? Yeah, so you'd just be approving or denying the appeal, and either way, the, the project is approved. It's just the conditions of approval.
Yeah, so I, I agree with Nikki. I don't think these conditions of approval are anything exceptional. I mean, maybe they're challenging for the applicant, but I don't think they're unreasonable for the town to require those things, given that of the three, one of them's already been kind of covered, and so I would follow staff recommendations.
Great, thank you.
And I have, make a motion to do that if you want, if you're ready.
Yeah, I'm going to say one thing real quick. I, I think both of them mentioned drainage. Well, maybe not this first one. I'm trying to see. But drainage is a concern, and it appears that some of the stormwater infrastructure has been paved over. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And that does seem to be a concern in the neighborhood, and we've heard that from West Reed, East Reed residents in the past. Yeah, so... Yeah, so if you would like to make a motion, that'd be great.
We'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-11. Should I read this whole thing? Or is that enough?
I would at least say, upholding the CDD's determination in denying the appeal.
Upholding the CDD's determination to deny the appeal and approve the requested urban lot split with all the original conditions of approval.
I'll second. Vice Chair Tarnay?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller? I'm sorry, Riley?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes.
And Commissioner Framan?
Yes.
I just, I do want to say that I sympathize, and I hear often that it appears things have been approved, and then the town comes back later and says, oh, we made a mistake, or something was not approved. And I don't think you're alone in that feeling. And hopefully, we can work together to not have this moving forward. But I appreciate you coming in today. Thank you.
So just to recap, your motion passed this evening on a vote of 3 to 0. So again, following the staff's recommendation up there. And then Luke will talk through the appeal timeframe.
And this decision is appealable to town council within 10 days of today, which would be Friday, September 30th, by 5:00 p.m.
Thank you. Okay, then do we move on to item 8? And that is staff reports? Did I miss something?
Did we have, did we go over Soaring Ranch continuance? Soaring Ranch continuance? I don't have the agenda up.
It was at 7.1, and I, we sort of passed it, but I would be happy to go back to it.
Okay, sorry. Okay, my apologies. I'm backwards. So we have a meeting next Tuesday, on the 27th of September. That's a joint council-commission meeting. That is essentially reintroduction of the general plan to both bodies. We will be going over the comments and feedback that we've gotten over the last couple of months, and the proposed changes that we'll present that, that night. And then, we'd originally thought that we could get through everything in one evening. It's not looking like that. So the council directed us last week to set up a second meeting to continue the general plan discussion. That's looking like it'll be October, oh, sorry, 11th. I think Kaylee may have sent an email already to your commission about that. And then we possibly have a planning commission meeting for October, though we're still kind of working out what might be on that agenda. We have a couple of moving pieces, one of which is Soaring Ranch, that may be ready for that night. So don't quite know what'll be on that agenda. If we don't have anything on that agenda, we will cancel it.
Great. And did you want to say anything about the Soaring Ranch, phase 3?
No, I didn't. I apologize. I was obviously distracted when we went through that earlier.
I have a question. Would it be possible to schedule that second meeting with the council, the joint meeting on the 18th, if we aren't having anything else on the agenda?
As of right now, the 11th seems to be the meeting that works.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have that sort of a ten-day. Part of that is because our safety element has to be reviewed by the Board of Forestry. And their next meeting that we're shooting to be on is November 1st. And so there's some lead time for us to package everything and have it done, which made the October 11th meeting sort of a better target for us to meet that timeframe.
And Commission Member reports, item 10.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report, except October 11th is the day before my exams for graduating my master's program. So it's not great, but, you know, I'll make it work.
I'm sure that I did things, and I cannot tell you what they are right now. But today's my wedding anniversary, and my husband's out of town. My entire family's out of town. I'm by myself. Okay. So I think that's it. I think we're going to adjourn to the next meeting of the Planning Commission, which we have listed as October 17th? Did you just say it was the 18th?
18th is the normal, the traditional Planning Commission, once a month, when we're not keeping you busy with joint council meetings for the general plan.
Yeah, I think that's a typo.
Yeah, perfect. So we will adjourn to the next Planning Commission meeting, October 18th, or actually to the next joint meeting, September 27th, at 5:00 p.m. here. Thank you.